I shouldn't say.
Perfect. I'll probably wait until right at 5:30 to start if that's okay.
It's off, huh?
Thank you.
Pick your nose.
Just about three minutes.
Are no close ups here.
I think what we see up there is what everyone else sees on Zoom. Hey guys, if you're joining us on Zoom, we're just gonna get started right at six o'clock. So just about another minute here. 5:30, not six o'clock. We're not gonna wait another 30 minutes.
Messing with me.
Those are comfortable, but they're not that comfortable.
We won't make you wait that long.
Would require tequila. That's what that would do. It would not be me. Maybe with the skin.
Okay.
25 years ago.
All right, guys, it's 5:30. So we'll go ahead and get started. My name is Nicole Miller. I'm the former editor of the Summit Daily News. We actually had a new editor start just on Monday. So I didn't want to throw him into the fray quite yet, but you guys will start seeing him around town soon. I just on the screen there saw a question in the chat where we're not doing any live questions tonight. All the questions are planned. So thanks to everybody who's here in Breckenridge. Thanks to everyone who's joining us at home on Zoom. I70 was a little hairy tonight, so hopefully lots of people are watching from home. There are three open seats on the Breckenridge Town Council, and we have a lot of candidates here tonight, and that's really exciting. I was at the Silverthorne Forum last night, and they have a contested election. So all four of the main municipalities have a contested municipal election this year, and we always like to see folks who are interested in getting involved in local government. So I just want to thank all the candidates for running, too. I know you really put yourself out there to do that. So here's the format for tonight. Each time you're up to speak, you'll have two minutes. So everyone will start with a two-minute introduction, and then after that, we have a series of four questions that we're gonna ask. The order that we're gonna use is the order you're seated in tonight. So we'll start on one side, move all the way to the other side, and then you'll go again, and we'll move all the way back. So that'll kind of be our order throughout the evening. So Jason Libby, we're gonna get started with you with the two-minute introduction, and we do have a timer here. So if you hear her iPhone alarm go off, that means you're out of time.
Sounds good. Hi, my name is Jason Libby. I've been in the county, well, almost 24 years now. Originally from Waterville, Maine, moved out here for the classic one-ski season like most people, and just ended up staying. I've done most jobs in this town from everything from working at Breckenridge to snowmobile guide, river guide, EMT pilot, KSMT, worked for them for a while, and then ultimately just got my real estate license in 2006. So I've been here pretty consistently every, from the summers, nonstop now for 24 years, almost two and a half decades. So I've been in, so, yeah, sorry, a little nervous. But I do love the fact that walking around town, you just know everybody, and I do love this town. I do love Breckenridge. Walking through the bank, you see four to five people every time you walk down the street. Takes a little bit longer than you think, but I just love all the people in this town, and it's gonna be hurt. Thank you.
You can go ahead.
Yep.
Sure. My name's Mike Zobi, and I've lived in Breckenridge for almost 40 years. I live in Wellington with my wife Rebecca and Bezos the dog. And I'm running for council because, you know, Breckenridge has never been an easy place to live, but I'm concerned that we're on a trajectory that's kind of taken us past a tipping point where it's gonna be really difficult for people who want to live and work here to be able to do so. You know, then that's not just a social issue. That's, that's an economic issue because we have, you know, businesses that are actually altering their hours because of staffing shortages, and that's, I think that's a, that's a big problem for us. I've worked a variety of jobs over those almost 40 years, but for 25 years, I worked as the operations director and then the executive director of Summit Huts Association and did a lot of stuff, everything from shoveling compost in toilets to other really glamorous jobs. But I shepherded, the one thing that I'm really proud of is I shepherded the long process of the permitting and construction of the sisters cabin. After my retirement from Summit Hudson 2020, I started a small handyman business, and that's what I'm doing right now. In 1990, I founded the Breckenridge Tire Society, and that exists today as the Summit Mountain Bike Alliance. And in that, part of that position was a lot of advocacy, and with my position of Summit Hudson, I served on a lot of committees and boards and were tasked with finding consensus and cooperation amongst people with a lot of differing and often competing and opposing views. And when you work with, in a group like that, you have to consider different points of view, and, you know, you look into cold, hard numbers, and you might have to adjust your, your, your own prejudices. And when you do those things, you know, you, you can make difficult decisions.
Thanks, Ed.
Hi, my name's Lenny Weisberg. I've lived in Breckenridge for 18 years, same house all along. I have a 13-year-old daughter who's hiding in the back of 50/50 custody of Danielle. I grew up on Long Island, and I went to school in Maine and skiing at Sunday River and decided to move out here. I, I do computer programming for hospitals, so I could live anywhere. So I'm not really tied into any particular industry like, you know, the store businesses or, you know, restaurants or, or the real estate. So hopefully that makes me a little bit more objective because I'm not really biased towards one side or the other, although I am biased towards a homeowner since I am one. I am the treasurer for the Summit Figures, the Summit Skating Club, which is the figure skating group here in Breckenridge. I'm also the treasurer for the Warriors Mark Association, which is really just a voluntary association that runs the, the park at the bottom of Broken Mice. What else can I say? I move, my primary reason why I'm running is because I'm upset about some of the recent decisions and issues and, and the way they relate to fairness. I think that you could limit the amount of real estate that's being used for short-term rentals without placing caps and with, and particularly without placing favoritism in certain neighborhoods, which I think is really offensive, the idea that we should pit neighborhoods against each other and say, if you live here, you have these rights, and if you live there, you have those rights. And that's been going on for a long time, I feel. There's a lot of people that, you know, resent certain neighborhoods because they have fiber internet and the other neighborhoods don't. And busing has been always been an issue where there's still some neighborhoods, especially out at the golf course and in the Highlands where there's no bus service. And in this town, things have gotten. So I'm not really tied into any particular industry like, you know, the store businesses or, you know, restaurants or, or the real estate. So hopefully that makes me a little bit more objective because I'm not really biased towards one side or the other, although I am biased towards a homeowner since I am one. I am the treasurer for the Summit Figures, the Summit Skating Club, which is the figure skating group here in Breckenridge. I'm also the treasurer for the Warriors Mark Association, which is really just a voluntary association that runs the, the park at the bottom of Broken Mice. What else can I say? I move, my primary reason why I'm running is because I'm upset about some of the recent decisions and issues and, and the way they relate to fairness. I think that you could limit the amount of real estate that's being used for short-term rentals without placing caps and with, and particularly without placing favoritism in certain neighborhoods, which I think is really offensive, the idea that we should pit neighborhoods against each other and say, if you live here, you have these rights, and if you live there, you have those rights. And that's been going on for a long time, I feel. There's a lot of people that, you know, resent certain neighborhoods because they have fiber internet and the other neighborhoods don't. And busing has been always been an issue where there's still some neighborhoods, especially out at the golf course and in the Highlands where there's no bus service. And in this town, things have gotten.
Hi, I'm Tom Day, and I have lived here in Breckenridge for 35 years. I moved here as a ski instructor from Bozeman, Montana, and I was actually born in Colorado. I was born in Cortez, but grew up in Montana. And so I've, I've raised two sons here, Joshua and Spencer. I think Spencer's still got his picture on Eric's wall and downstairs at Eric's, but, you know, I've been here for a long time. I've had two ex-wives, and one's a little more famous than the other one, but hey, worry about that. But I, I, I love Breckenridge. I, this town is amazing to me. I think the good and the bad. I love riding my road bike around town and down the valley and, and riding my mountain bike here and walking into town and, and, and just the whole experience of living here in Breckenridge is amazing. I love skiing here. I ski a lot. I ski as much as I possibly can. So, you know, that, that part is, I, I just super enjoy being here, and I wanna, I wanna see Breckenridge continue to get better. And I think there's some things that we, maybe housing, we've, we've maybe gone kind of a little bit of a wrong direction on that. I think that we could do better with. I know we've got, what, 240 units of affordable housing coming on here this summer or next fall, which is going to make things considerably better. I think taking people's property rights, that's what it seems to me, is something that I don't agree with because, you know, where, where does it end, I guess? So, and I've got a lot of people that feel the same way. I am a real estate broker. I've been a real estate broker here for 32 years. This has affected my business massively. I've, I've probably lost 12 deals since the second of November. So I, I just don't, don't agree with the policy, and I'm hoping we can work to make something better.
Also.
I'm done. Two minutes. So I was, I was timing myself, so.
You can go ahead, Todd.
Hi, I'm Todd Rankin. I hope the next two minutes gives you some insight into what I'm about and why I think I deserve, why I think I deserve your vote. The foundation for success in this amazing ski town starts with investing in our people and protecting the Breck brand. My wife Barb and I have been in Summit County for almost 17 years. I'm finally home. I have served for almost a decade on Summit County Open Space Advisory Council. I chaired the committee to move the troll, and more on that in a minute. I currently chair the Breck Events Committee, and I've also served on the board at Summit Huts and Summit Association of Realtors. Barb and I enthusiastically support many local nonprofits, but especially the BOEC, the Summit Foundation, and the FERC. We also started a local nonprofit that has raised close to $100,000 in the last three years for Summit Youth Hockey. I've successfully run a real estate company since 2009, mentoring and managing 19 members of our team. My experience with real estate sales discovered market rate units, including short-term rentals, and almost 200 deed restricted sales. We also manage our own portfolio of long-term rentals that we built from scratch. Never thought Isaac Hartstone would be a centerpiece of an election campaign, but let's jump back to the troll for a second. The troll, just like STRs, was an extremely divisive issue in our community. You either loved it, or you hated it being in your backyard. Since we worked through that process, it's still a great part of our town that both sides enjoy. I hope to apply the lessons learned from moving the troll to the STR challenge that divides our community. My lens on this community is the long one. I hope to apply my housing and small business expertise, my troll-moving skills, my knowledge of events, open space, and nonprofits to make our community better. The keys right out of the gate to me are housing security, childcare availability, quality of life, and navigating the STR cap. I hope I earn your vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Sade. I currently serve on town council. Breckenridge has been my home for the last 20 or 12 years. Like many others, I moved here for one winter season, felt happier and healthier than I ever had. I created strong friendships and a strong community. My roots kept growing deep here, and my love for this community is what motivates me to serve. In addition to town council, I'm one of the proud founding members of Mountain Dreamers and the current board president. I serve on the Events Committee, the Social Equity Advisory Committee, the High Country Conservation Center Board. I'm a mentor with CMC's Mountain Scholars Program, and I previously served on the Open Space Advisory Commission. I'm glad to have a seat at the decision-making table, lending my voice to the challenging, ongoing conversations we face as a community and working to create pathways for residents to be successful and ensuring livability as we face increasing pressures. As the youngest council member and candidate, I bring the perspective of someone who has just hit their stride professionally and personally, a life stage that gives voice on council to our hard-working residents. I'm experiencing many of the same challenges others face as we build a fulfilling life. Additionally, through my work at a small local public affairs firm, I have a deep understanding of the tools and limitations of government, how to listen to and engage community members, partner organizations, and business voices to shape policy and create positive change. We have a strong economy and an incredible community, and we can do even better. My goal is to make sure that future generations can and want to make Breckenridge home. Thank you for this opportunity.
Hi, my name's Ally Doolan. I'm running for Breckenridge Town Council because I want to be your ally for the people of Breckenridge. In my career, I'm an aerospace engineer. Every day, I am faced with challenges. I have to solve technical problems with diverse teams of engineers. I can bring expertise to town council that no one else can bring with my strong technical background and problem-solving skills. I believe in freedom. I believe our town must respect the rights of individuals, including private property rights. I believe that we must provide affordable workforce housing, but we must also put responsibility back to employers to provide a living wage for employees. Sorry. Besides that, I also believe that we need to have balanced environmental policies. There are things going on right now where we are considering the outdoor energy mitigation, which, while I believe is well-intended, does not really solve the problem and will only put more taxes, more taxes and higher expenses on homeowners. I'm here to listen to you, the people of Breckenridge, and when you show up at town council meetings and 100 people are against something, I'm not gonna vote for it because I care about what you think. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nathan Moorfield. I have been in Breckenridge and Summit County for 27 years, which is now more than half my life, which is painful to say out loud. I met my wife here, have my two daughters here, currently a business owner, like several of us, real estate. But I came as a whitewater river guide. I used to do backpacking guiding, climbing guiding, leadership training. So I think a lot of us who sell real estate sometimes feel like we get put in the box, and I think all of us would think that we're a little bit more than just what real estate sales is all about. I'm doing this because I really, really, really love this community. It's, it is my home. Our roots are pretty deep here as well. And like several of us, I was a little disappointed in what we saw over the last few town council meetings and some, and the ordinances with STRs that were put in place. All well-intended. I think people have a good heart, and we're trying to solve some problems that are pretty important, but at the same time, a substantial part of the community felt like we didn't matter anymore, that we didn't have a voice anymore. If you go through that many people asking you, maybe think about this a little more. It was discouraging to feel that after 27 years, I just didn't matter. So I felt like stepping out of a comfort zone because sitting up here in front of a microphone is not my favorite place to be, but I felt the need to get up and put my voice out there. I think I bring a unique perspective. I have been an employer in town. I've been an employee in town. In some ways, I'm still an employee in town. I, I hang out at a ski shop once or twice, twice a week, helping out a friend of mine who owns a shop there and keeps me engaged with our local clientele, keeps me engaged with the employees who were me 25 years ago.
I am Jay Beckerman. I own and operate the Blue River Bistro and Bistro North in Dillon. I'm a 20-plus-year resident of Breckenridge, and like you, I've lived through the changes that have happened, and I've dedicated my time and efforts to really fiercely protect the fabric of this community. And, and I plan on continuing to do that for our residents, for our workforce, for our guests, and most importantly, for our children. I've been very fortunate to have the opportunity to serve in roles that were very uncomfortable and unfamiliar to me. One was in marketing where it's not a strong point of mine, but when Lucy Kay asks you to join a committee, you, you join it. And so I joined the BTO, and during my time there, I participated in adding the management role to the marketing and making a destination management and marketing organization. I also was present for the establishment of the Destination Management Plan, which provides a plan on the horizon for this council and future councils. Then moving on to planning, which was more like a foreign language to me, I jumped in with two feet with the Upper Blue Planning Commission, the representative on the countywide planning commission, and currently serve as the chair of the Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission. Learned a lot about the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan. Learned a lot about the applications and the expectations and what that means to a community of builders and architects and planners and real estate agents. And in that time, I also learned not why open space was important, but why it was important to protect it and how to protect it. Then finally got into an area that I was comfortable with finances and joined the Summit School District Finance Committee, only to realize that schools' finances are nothing like business finances and have been, thank you.
So I don't think you guys will be surprised to learn that we're gonna talk about short-term rentals tonight. A lot of you brought that up in your introductions, and I know it's been a hot topic around the community lately. So Jay, we're gonna start with you and then go back in the reverse order that we did for the introductions. And if anyone needs me to repeat the question anywhere through, just give me a shout. Do you support the direction the town is headed on short-term rental regulations? What would you do differently?
And that is an important question facing our community right now. I do support the way that the town is going about now. I was for a moratorium for when the discussion began so that we could have had more time to have the stakeholders in the room and to have focus groups and to look at what was happening in other communities and what the repercussions of certain actions were. But I think that the council has made strides with the overlay districts and focusing the short-term rentals where there's the infrastructure for them. It is important to me and I believe for our town to look for an area where we can have more boots and bicycles and less cars on the road, and by focusing our guests where the infrastructure exists can help accomplish that goal and have a smaller impact on the community. And I think that's really what we're all looking for, is a way to provide an area for our guests where they have a smaller impact and a smaller footprint on our community.
I guess in short, I am not in favor of the current direction. That's not to say that I'm not in favor or, or agree that something needs to be done. We are certainly challenged with traffic, and we're certainly challenged with employee housing, attainable housing, and the lives of the people that live here have been impacted for sure. However, it was, again, it was very disappointing to watch. Only a few voices mattered during the process. I mean, we're about five months into this, and not really much has changed. I am liking what I'm hearing to a degree from the STR committee, the advisory committee. I was disappointed when I learned that the community members that were chosen aren't Breckenridge residents, and that was really difficult for me. I mean, I already felt like my voice didn't matter, and I didn't have a voice. And when the town chose committee members to advise them on short-term rental regulations, they didn't, couldn't find two members of the Breckenridge public. That, that's, it kind of feels more like a steering committee than actually what we're trying to get done. I actually don't see how the current regulations are going to bring about more attainable housing. They're not gonna bring about fewer people, and they're not really lessening traffic. So the things that we need to get done couldn't be more in favor of. I don't see it working. I mean, I was talking to someone today who said Bella DeVeil, who works for the town, told him that, you know, a short-term rental license might be eight years out. Well, that also means that it's eight years till we see if the attrition rate gets reached. I mean, do we have eight years to figure out if this is gonna work? I think we can do something better, and I think we can do something that's, has an impact sooner, and I think we can do something that would probably bring the community together a little bit more. It's probably as divided as I've ever seen it in 27 years, and that's been hard to watch.
I'm gonna say something right before you talk. One of the people chatted up there that they can't remember everyone's name. I don't think they can see the nameplates on Zoom. So if at the beginning of your answer, if y'all say your name, I think that would be helpful for the folks watching on Zoom.
My name's Ally Doolan, and I do not support the current regulations that have been implemented by town council. I do not believe that the local government should be picking the winners and losers, and that's what they're doing. They're determining who can have a license. They're determining what zones are gonna be allowed to have more licenses or less licenses. And I, I'm a really big skier. I skied 120 days last season, and I'm on track to make 100 this season. And one of the things I love to do when I go on the mountain is I talk to people on the chairlifts, everyone. I ask them where they're visiting from. I ask them where they're staying. And honestly, nine out of 10 people, when I talk to them on the chairlift and they're an out-of-towner, they're staying in an Airbnb. So if we're gonna start limiting those, we are gonna reduce the number of tourists that come to this town, and we are gonna hurt our local economy. This economy is built on tourism. Everyone who works in town, if you work at a restaurant, a gift shop, all of those things, you depend on tourists. They are paying your paycheck. So I am against those regulations. In addition, I just don't believe in the penalties and basically, I, the fees that are being created, I consider that akin to a penalty. And instead of creating something that's negative, I think we need to create things that are positive. So we need to create incentives for someone to rent to a local worker instead of saying, you need to rent to a local. And, and I would compare it to if, if I were to walk into a restaurant in town and say, Vale Resorts doesn't pay their employees enough. You need to give their employees a discounted meal. That restaurant owner would look at me like I'm crazy because it's not their responsibility, just like it's not the private homeowner's responsibility to provide housing for workers. Vale Resorts, if they're gonna pay $15 an hour to their employees, they need to come to the table, they need to provide housing. $15 is not a livable wage in Summit County.
Carol Sade for the Zoomers. Absolutely. I am supportive of this direction. We are not unique in the challenges with short-term rentals. Communities across the country have been facing the challenges with short-term rentals not equalizing in the market. And what the town council did was listen to the community. There had been years of conversations bubbling up. There were roundtables before those, any sort of cap was proposed, and this is the first step. The cap was the first step. Right now, the ordinance is with a task force, a mix of industry voices and community members that are talking about which areas of town would be more suitable, which would not put pressures on neighborhoods and that do advance our goals. Certain areas like the floor clock corridor, which provides walkability, which has always been part of that tourism base. And that next step was largely from the feedback we got from individuals commenting. So I am supportive of this direction. We put parameters on the growth of short-term rentals because the market was not equalizing. And at the same time, I think we need to be very nimble and adapt because the state is currently considering certain regulations that might impact the markets. We do need to continue to pay attention what's happening at the state level.
Todd Rankin for the Zoomers. I absolutely support the direction the council's taking with short-term rentals and the cap. To me, the decisions for the future of the town are all about people and the brand. And to me, one of the important pieces is the sustainable ratio of tourists to locals. And to me, one of the important pieces is the sustainable ratio of tourists to locals and, and having an excellent experience when you come visit here and when you live here. Quality of life for locals and the folks that live here and provide the services for those tourists is extremely important to me. And, and I think important for the brand and important to the guest. And so with that, I, yeah, I absolutely support the direction the council is going with the cap. I think it gives us the ability to then adapt and adjust as we get data and information back. I think Carol's point about being nimble is very valuable. I also think as far as one of the steps in the future that we need is we need some metrics that we're going to measure success by. But I think without focusing on housing security and making sure our workers have a place to live, you know, at the moment, soup's on, it's closed at four, the gas station shut sometimes during the week, you can't get coffee at Starbucks, there's one server at the copper top. So if we don't address the short-term rental cap and kind of the overburdening of our community, we're going to be in trouble and the guest experience is going to suffer. So I think we've got a lot of work to do. Look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to do that work and make Inbrek a better place.
I do not support the current direction of the short-term rental remedy, I guess, because, I mean, first of all, I feel that the, the main employers here with Vale Resorts, you know, I've been a snow sculptor for 28 years, so I'm a culprit of this whole thing. I bring all these people in, so sorry about that. But I have, you know, I've, I've, I've watched Vale Resorts for years skate on, on having any responsibility for building any reasonable housing because they are definitely the, the greatest impact on Breckenridge for housing and for the county with Keystone. And then you start throwing copper and stuff and there's, there's 3,000 plus people, you know, ski instructors. As far as I know, Breckenridge employs almost a thousand ski instructors when they're running strong. So that's a, that's a huge impact on housing. Why haven't these guys had to do something about that? So, and I applaud the town for coming up with this 240 units that'll be coming on the market and I think that's great. But at the same time, I, I do not agree with taking away people's property rights and, and determining who gets it and who doesn't. Because I think that we've got transportation right now where people don't have to use their cars. We've got the areas where people can walk and that sort of stuff. What we're doing now is we're actually forcing people outside of the town to rent properties in the county, which is going to bring more cars into town. And then we build a thousand car parking structure where we got more cars. I've seen, I've seen cars going out of town, you know, waiting in line to get into the parking structure that we just built. So it just seems kind of like that, I don't know, that didn't work. So I, I think we need to have, we need to have people staying in town wherever it is in town. And that way they're using the buses and using the transportation we have here and not driving in from, if they're staying up in Woodmore. Okay, sorry.
Hi, Lenny Weisberg. I think the current direction of the town is completely wrong. I think it's discriminatory against certain neighborhoods with this idea that if you live in a certain neighborhood, you'll have a different cap than if you live in another neighborhood and that there shouldn't be caps at all. I'm in favor of this idea that was thrown around in Burlington, Vermont, which didn't pass, by the way. But the idea was that for the first three years when you own your property, you can only long-term rent it. After that, it's yours and you can do what you want. That opens up a window during those three years where there's properties that would become available for a long-term rent without really taking away homeowners' rights. It does, the only person's rights that takes away are outside investors that just want to come in and buy properties that they're not going to use. But you have a lot of people that short-term or want to short-term rent properties that maybe come up from Denver every weekend and use their property every weekend, but they, but has to sit empty now during the week because they're not supposed to rent it. You also have people that are punished because they live in their own house. Me, for example, I long-term rent, I short-term rent, which I started doing now only because of the caps. I was going to wait till my daughter went to college, do it for college, but instead I had to do it early because I was forced into it. But I have to pay for seven-bedroom license even though I only short-term rent three licenses. I should be rewarded for the long-terming, the one bedroom that I, that I rent instead. It's as if I should move out of my house and just rent the whole house because the license is for all seven. And that's not right either. We shouldn't be taking, telling our residents to move out of their house so that they can maximize their license. The other thing is we need to incentivize people. You know, there's no, if during the, the moratorium on eviction, you'd be crazy if to long-term rent to people that you didn't know because you might never get paid. You know, we can incentivize people. That's why I propose the town has a program where they guarantee the rent will be paid if the tenant defaults or that they pay for damages. And in return, the tenant doesn't have to pay a security deposit.
My name's Mike Zobi and I do support the general direction that the town's taking with the short-term rental policy. I've sat through a few of the overlay task force and well, you sure begin to realize what a complex and contentious issue this is. And I've heard from a lot of locals on all, all sides of this issue and they all have good points and they're all very passionate about it. But the bottom line is I feel that the increase in the short-term rental market through Airbnb and these other things is definitely a not insignificant contributing factor to not only the difficulty of the long-term rental market for locals, but the dramatic increase in real estate prices that we've seen in, in the last few years. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, the short-term rental market is an important part of our economy and provides incomes for many local people and jobs for many people. My job itself is many of my clients are short-term rental market people. So, you know, I don't want to dismiss the importance of this, but I think that the caps that they're talking about in some of these neighborhoods with up to 80% of the units being available for short-term rentals, I think is, is quite generous. I believe that non-owner occupied short-term rentals are a commercial property and they should be treated as such through, you know, code and, and safety and so forth. Although the original Airbnb model of somebody who occupies their home and rents out a room is actually a pretty cool concept. I just think that that model has gone completely out the window. I support discouraging short-term rentals in traditionally residential areas. And although there are some tweaks, I think that need to be happened to that.
Your time's up.
Jason Libby. When I started down this road, I was dead. I'm in real estate and I was all about property rights or it's so, the town's so divided right now. It's really hard to say. I commend the current council of what they, they're trying to do and I know why they had to do it. It is getting out of hand. We definitely have a housing crisis. However, like, there might be some different ways to look at it. We could do different zoning. We could just have a walk to town zone. We could do neighborhood zone. Just, I'm not a big fan of caps though either. And just being able to tell what, what people can do with their properties. I'm more of on the incentivizing homeowners to long-term, like the Housing Helps Program. The leasing to locals programs, amazing. And then ultimately buy downs. The current projects on the agenda look amazing with Alta Berry, one, two, block 11, Justice Center. It's just when it comes to homeowners, I mean, we, we've been homeowners, we begged, borrowed and stealed to get our homes when we first moved to town. I mean, I had eight roommates and tapestry rooms and we finally got a home and we've always had roommates. And it's just, it's hard to have the council tell you what you need to do with your property. But there are different ways to approach it. I'm just open, trying to be neutral on this whole thing. But I definitely on the side of incentivizing homeowners and what the council's currently been doing, but property rights and caps, I'm not a big fan of, so.
Jason, we'll start with you on the next question. And you guys will see that a lot of these questions are going to have really similar themes. It's a lot of the stuff that the town is really struggling with right now. So my question is, what's your strategy to manage growth and development in the town?
Well, I think a lot of it comes to our marketing and how we can market a little bit differently. I mean, I, everybody knows Breckenridge is here. We did a great job of that. But just marketing to like where we can just teach people how to navigate the town a little bit better. Come to town, get to the buses, maybe some different parking structures. And the growth itself, I think, again, with some of the upcoming projects, I think that'll be very well as well. Smart marketing incentivizes people to park to your parking garage, like parking, what is the word I'm looking for? If you're going to stay in the parking garage, just the congestion alone, like I know that Watson isn't done yet, the Watson Circle, but if people are going to say, just put like a block, if you're going to pay the highest price, if you're going to stay from three to six in the afternoon and then incentivize people to stay longer and stay in town longer. It's more of just incentivizing people to stay in town and not being rushed out all at the same time. So.
Mike Zobi. And, you know, I lived here when there were real shoulder seasons and people took vacations and closed up shop and took off in the spring and the summer. But, you know, some really smart people in our marketing departments did a really good job. And, but there's not much we can do to prevent folks from coming here and I don't think we would want to, even if we could. But, you know, something's gotten over the edge here and a lot of people are telling me that they're leaving this community, not just because it's gotten so expensive that they, homeownership is out of their reach or they can't find a place to live, but because it's gotten too crowded. And I agree here that marketing's a big part of it. And I think it's time for the discussion of, does, do the taxpayers need to fund marketing at all? Is that something that should be funded by the private sector that is benefiting most from it? And, you know, as we get busier and busier, you know, gridlock, just it gets more frequent shelves at City Market are bare and you can't get around and I worry about emergency vehicles getting around. So the other thing we can do is manage the people that are here better through, you know, encouraging people to, to park and walk and improve and innovate with our public transportation system. And I know it's hard in this country to get people to ride public transportation, but we need to keep working on that. And lastly, I think, you know, it's, we need to encourage education to people on how to get around. I know that the town works hard on that, but it's something that we really need to keep working on. And if we focus more people who are staying in these short-term rentals up into these zones that are close into town, it's a lot easier for them to walk into town rather than having to drive.
I just want to clarify, sorry, reread the question. What's your strategy to manage growth and development in town? I have a plan to talk about tourism a little later in the evenings. This is really focused on residential building, development, that kind of thing, if that makes sense. Sorry if that wasn't clear.
Lenny Weisberg. My, my first suggestion is that we really need bus service everywhere. The town I grew up in only had one bus. It took two hours to do a loop, but they didn't discriminate against anybody. Everybody was a member of the town. That to me, that's the idea what municipality is all about. And you have people in the Highlands and out by the golf course that have to drive in to go skiing. They're part of this town. They deserve the same services as everybody else. And that would help, you know, reduce some of the, the crowding, some of the traffic at least. The other idea that I thought about, but I guess maybe it's related to tourism, but going along lines with what other people have said. I just had this crazy idea this morning that maybe we should get rid of most of the parking lots. Maybe we should force people to take buses, have better bus service and not have places to park. Have the people that come visit in town have to stay, make it more of a destination resort like it used to be instead of a, you know, a day resort where people just come up in the day from Denver and that will reduce crowds. Yet it wouldn't hurt restaurants and businesses because if people are staying here, they're more likely to stay at night and go out to eat and shop in town. So I think it would be a win-win-win situation all the way around. Still, businesses would do just as well. Town would be less crowded. There would be need for a lot more short-term rentals for everybody to be able to stay. Then we would just need to build long-term rentals, which we could build in where the parking lots used to be.
So Jeremy, there's not much development left around here, is there? I think we're pretty well done. Okay, there's a few lots out there, but it's not like we're going to have this massive amount of development going on in the future. Unless we do tear downs and build more stuff where, and a lot of stuff that would be torn down would be reduced in zoning anyway. So, so I, I don't see a problem with more people coming except for the fact that, you know, the parking structure I, I, I thought was a great idea, but you know, like I've seen these, these lines literally going out of town for people waiting to get into the parking structure. And that just kind of like, I just went, oh shit, we kind of, we kind of stepped on our own foot there. But I, I think that the, whether you've got somebody who's long-term renting a property or somebody short-term renting a property, there's still somebody in that property. So that's this, that's the same impact. So I, I, I don't understand that. The thing is that, that I think is better is that people that are short-termining are coming here and they're, they're buying t-shirts, they're buying skis, they're buying outfits. They're going to restaurants and they're spending money here. And unfortunately, I don't see long-term people doing that. So I think that is to, to, to make things better. I don't think there's that much that we need to do because we're pretty well tapped out. I think there's maybe what, 20, 30 lots left in the Highlands to build on? I don't know hardly any lots in town that are still available. We're running out of lots, right, Carol? I mean, this, there's, there's just not that much left to do. So, so I don't think it's going to be that big of an impact. We do need to manage our people that are here better. And I think we do a pretty good job of that right now, but I'm, I'm sorry about the snow sculpting thing because that's kind of gotten out of control, but it's, it's really fun to do. I've been doing it for 28 years, so I love that. So two minutes, I'm done.
Rankin for the Zoomers. A common theme you'll find with me is investing in people. I mean, that's where it all starts. That's why we're all here. And I think it's the foundation of a good culture in any organization or any town. So, you know, when you talk about maybe expanding the transit plan for the town, it's really hard to do that when you can't hire bus drivers. They can't find housing or can't have childcare for their families. So to me, it starts with investing in people and making sure that they've got housing security, that we've got units on the ground for them to move into. You know, it's, it's a lot easier to manage growth when the buses are zipping around with, with drivers and yeah, they've got a place to live. So to me, the first step is exactly what the council is doing with this plan to add 970 units here over the next five years with housing. I think that starts to dig us out a bit. You know, we're still going to be short of the, based on the needs assessment that the, the housing committee put together for the town. So again, for me, it's investing in people and, and that starts with the housing and childcare piece. Another component to the growth is, is I think we need to start thinking about the management side of events. You know, maybe hammers go down on Monday from snow sculpture and then maybe we only have a few tickets on Saturday and encourage folks to be here Monday to Friday. So starting to get into creative concepts there to make sure that we're getting the right loading so that we're not having the gridlock. And then I think the other conversation to start is, is with the ski area and capacity. And, you know, there's certain gridlock days and, and that's not good for their brand when we're on Jerry of the Day with the gun to the line, run into Subway, right? Like we all lose when that happens. So I think conversations with the ski area about making sure the experience in town is just phenomenal because that benefits us all. Thank you.
Yeah, balancing development and growth is not a new challenge. It's always been ongoing. And we, and if we answer your question from more the building perspective, development, we don't have that much land left. And what we do have is largely town-owned property, block 11 and McCain. And we're talking about building housing there. And we need to be especially strategic that we're matching our housing needs for our community, but also thinking about additional infrastructure. If we're thinking capacity, it's of course not just visitors or traffic. We need to work through some congestion issues. The parking garage has created some challenges, but again, that was the first step. There's new road developments that will largely ease the pressure there. Also, I mean, nuts and bolts, building capacity, we need to think about our water. We need to work with our partners like the sanitation district to make sure we have the sewage capacity. I mean, transit capacity to make sure that we're serving any new developments. And also Todd touched on the human element. That's absolutely the most important one here. We need to think about childcare and other ways to support our new residents.
One thing when it comes to growth, I think a lot of people think of growth as a negative thing. And I think that we need to embrace growth as a community because Breckenridge is a place where a lot of people love to come and visit us. And people are moving here because this is a great community. We have amazing quality of life here. And it's very desirable. So we need to obviously have balanced growth, but I don't think we should discourage it. One thing that was, I guess, a little shocking to me is that when we do have a housing crisis, instead of building housing in our gondola parks lots, we're going to be building a new timeshare. And so to me, I think, is that really the growth that we need? Do we need more timeshares or do we need more housing for locals? Another thing that I think that the current town council has passed has been very prohibitive building codes where we have a lot of green policies that we're trying to implement. And while I think those are well intended, they give everyone kind of that warm fuzzy, right? Sometimes those make things cost prohibitive, more expensive, much longer to build. And does that really make sense for our community? Other things I need, think we need to consider is allowing people to build accessory dwelling units so that we can provide more housing for local workers. And so I think these are things that the town council needs to consider when they're making decisions about growth and the future of the community of Breckenridge.
Nathan Morefield for the Zoomers. The first thing. When I think of growth and development, I'm a big fan of replicating success and we have some, some pretty cool successes. I lived in the Wellington neighborhood for 14 years. So places like the Wellington neighborhood, Gibson Heights, Smith Ranch, Peak One Neighborhood in Frisco. Um, I I I think we saw a a big dynamic, a big change in the dynamic of of what Breckenridge looked like. And that's the first time with the Wellington neighborhood was the first time I really remember a bunch of locals actually living in Breckenridge. Uh, and I thought that was really cool. It was a real big positive for my family. I got to raise my daughters around a lot of other kids and and a lot of people that I knew older than me with kids didn't have that same opportunity. So I think we do, I'm a big fan of the town continuing to acquire acquire lands where it can. So that it can, even if it's to protect it for the long term, so maybe they need it down the road. I know that they've been on, they've been doing that. And I'm just, I would be happy to encourage that and support that use of of funds. I think we have to really take a really hard look at what's going on around us because unfortunately Breckenridge is a tiny little place and we're affected by so much going on around us. Silverstone's growing like crazy. Denver and the Front Range is growing like crazy and it's weird because we're trying to figure out how can we affect people coming here that aren't living here and I wish I had a fantastic answer, um, but I I really don't, but we need to really understand where everybody is coming from. Because I think the the number of users coming to the state of Colorado is growing like crazy. One kind of fun thought I had one time is what used to be our biggest strength was that the town of Breckenridge and the ski area were kind of intertwined and it made it really cool.
Time's up.
Jay Beckerman, answering the question to strategies to manage growth and development. I think it's important to realize that we're all in this together and we're definitely not alone. This is something that communities across Colorado, across the United States and resort communities are facing. And I think that our town is doing a fantastic job in managing the growth with development code and design standards as as they're written. And between the town of Breckenridge, Summit County, Bosack, Osack, that they're eliminating the housing that could be in the back country by using, by buying up those properties to make sure that the growth doesn't go outside of areas that we want it or where it's safe to be. And I do agree with Todd and Carol in the fact that we do need to support our families and our businesses. Keeping the our, the people that work here local and is should be top priority. And I think housing and childcare are a big part of managing what is coming with growth. I think above everything else is community capital that may be above things that we take care of the people that take care of us. And that is the town of Breckenridge staff that is out there wearing the firemen's uniform, the police uniforms, the planning department, the building department, the people that plow our streets. And those are the ones that we really need to take care of because they take care of us. And to really value our town's workforce. And lastly, a pathway for businesses to be more sustainable is of utmost importance. Right now it is not feasible for all businesses to be a sustainable business. And if we work to allow that, I think that will help us manage our growth. Thank you.
A lot of you mentioned housing in your growth questions. We're going to talk a little bit more about that. Uh, I'm curious what you think the role of government should be in terms of providing housing? And then beyond that, what density and income would you target?
I'm sorry, repeat it one more time?
What do you think the role of government should be in providing housing and what density and income would you target?
So our government has done more for employee housing than I think any other municipality in the state or even in the country, perhaps. The amount of workforce housing that has been created from the Wellington where I lived for 13 years to Valley Brook, Block 11, Alta Verity 1, Alta Verity 2, the net zero apartments. This has been such a huge success in mitigating some of our workforce housing issues. And I think that targeting, we have light deed restrictions that mandate that you work in county for 35 hours or more uh, per week. And then we have heavier restrictions in which that it is based on your AMI or percentage of the AMI. And I think that that has been really well balanced and I highly support the direction that it's headed.
I think government plays a really important role in in housing. I think it's maybe different in different communities. I think there may be a community where it maybe doesn't play as big of a role. I think ours, it's really, really important. The 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 kind of free market, as much as I'm a fan of it, definitely has issues here. And I think Breckenridge has done a fabulous job over the last 20 something years, doing a great job of it. Of addressing it. And I think we've led the way in that. I'm I'm pretty proud of that. I love that we have done some of the different income levels. We've provided different income levels, some sort of attainable living, uh, whether it be renting, whether it be purchasing. And I think that's a really good, I think, just continuing what we're doing in that regard. Again, I like replicating success and that's something we've done really, really well. In some ways it's hard to add too much to it other than saying continue doing replicating that success. Um, I have heard from a few people that I've talked to over the last few weeks saying we would actually, we've done a really great job with the lower end, but there's starting to be a gap in the higher end. And so, and it's weird to say, I I literally had someone say, I'd love to find something for like 1.2. We live here, we can afford it, but there's nothing there. So we've done a great job of focusing on the low end. So continuing to 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 provide something in in a bunch of different income levels, I think is really important.
Hey, I'm Ally Doolan. I think the town of Breckenridge has done a pretty good job contributing to the housing, managing the housing in Summit County. However, I think that they need to focus on bringing the employers into the solution here. And we really need to put accountability back on Vale Resorts, back on BGV, back on Summit County School District, some of the largest employers in our town to work with the town of Breckenridge to partner, be mission partners. That's what we say in aerospace engineering. You're my mission partner. To to provide housing for employees. And some of that stuff might be more apartment style housing. We have a lot of people who come here in the winter from South America. We have a lot of J1 visa workers. And they need housing on a very seasonal basis, December, January, February, March. And so we need to do a better job at addressing the housing needs of all of the people who come to our community, whether it be a J1 visa worker, a seasonal worker, or someone who lives here permanently. And again, I think that comes back to having more discussions with employers about meeting these needs.
I mean, government has a huge role in housing in this community. And here I draw from personal experience. I moved to this community in my mid twenties, patching together jobs from working at Clint's to the night shift at a lodge. And then when it was, it was when I was able to purchase a home in one of town's original workforce housing neighborhoods that I had the stability to contribute to this community. And I think that's a similar story for so many of our residents. Town has done a great job. We're well ahead of some other communities and the land banking that we've done. Also, we're not alone in this. A lot of other communities deal with these issues. And Breckenridge is part of the Colorado Association of Ski Towns. So largely our buy downs and housing helps. It was modeled after indeed a program in Vale, which allowed the town to kind of purchase a deed restriction on existing open market homes. Also, we're exploring different options, incentivizing long term rentals like landing locals, which is in its pilot year, and we should continue to evaluate. But absolutely, government plays a significant role. To your question to AMI, AMI is not perfect, but we need to continue to build housing stock based on our needs. Our last housing needs assessment was done in 2019. That was before COVID and we know things have changed dramatically since then. So what town is doing now is focusing on building those lower AMI rental units because we knew we were so significantly behind there. But it's a fluid situation and as we look to build out Block 11 and McCain, making sure that we're doing it and strategically based on our needs. From a density standpoint, I think we should work within our code, within our land use guidelines, but there's exceptions and we can go denser in certain situations that allow for that. And then just to touch on employers contributing to housing, we do have some great.
Time's up.
Todd Rankin for the Zoomers. I think the town has done an exceptional job in the past 20, 25 years in investing in in housing. And I think they absolutely need to continue with that role and need to be the leaders in our community when it comes to investing in locals housing. I mean, we are part of the solution here as as the market rate units continue to hit turbo. Land banking to me is an important concept that I think we need to look at as we, you know, we're, we're looking at 47% of the employees that work in the basin, live in the basin. Well, 53% of the employees will live outside of the basin. So I think we need to look at land outside of of the upper blue to make sure we've got housing security there. I also think we need to leverage dollars that other entities have like Summit County. I think there's a phenomenal job going on at the Justice Center parcel there where there's a joint partnership between the town and the county. I think we need to look to more of that and see if we can take our dollars and, you know, maybe we help with Forest Hill over, um, over by I-70 there in the dam. I think working with the school district as well is is an important concept. They've got a tremendous amount of land. Businesses like Vale and BGV have have done some good work and I'd like to see them continue to invest in housing. I love the project that BGV's got going by 7-Eleven and I want to see more of that, more private investment in housing. I'd also like to see the opportunity for smaller businesses to invest in housing. And then on the AMI front, I think that lower part needs a lot of focus. You know, we got a lot of employees here in that 15 to $25 an hour. So under 60% AMI, under 80%, that's where the focus needs to be to make sure that our service jobs that service our our tourists are able to live here and and be a part of the fabric of the community. So creativity is going to be key and, um, yeah, the town needs to keep the, doing the great leadership job they've done. Thank you.
Tom Day, and I think, first of all, people have said here that property prices are really expensive here. They're that way everywhere, everywhere. I just had an agent of mine made an offer on a property in Denver. It was listed at 1.2 million dollars. They made an offer $350,000 over asking and they didn't get the property. So that's, you know, we're, we're seeing this all over the place. So we can't just say, gosh, Breckenridge is out of control because the prices are too high. There's a house that sold in Aspen for $75 million. So we don't even compare to those guys, but still we are expensive. But the cost of a two by four has gone through the roof. So, so that unfortunately has definitely created some issues for us. But I I've got to admit, I commend you guys on what you've done, town council, you guys. You have done a great job with with what we've got so far, but unfortunately I think other people have been allowed to skate on this. Like I've said before, Vale Resorts has really done little to nothing. They've done a little bit, but not anywhere near the impact that they have here. They employ thousands of people that come here for six months a year and some of them stay for a little longer, you know, as I'm here for a year. But they, their, their wages are are below what they should be and their shareholders are getting all the money and it's, it that does, just doesn't work. It doesn't seem to be working. So and and same way with the, with Grand Lodge or Grand, Grand Properties. They're, they've, they've had more impact with their development in the last 10, 15 years here than anybody has. You look at what they've done. They've done Grand Timber, they've done Grand Lodge, they've done Grand Peak Eight, and now they just got a new deal approved on the, on the land between the gondola and and City Market. So they're doing all this huge amount of stuff and I don't see any accountability there. I see, I see very little.
Hi, Lenny Weisberg. Um, I think the program where the town buys open open market properties and converts them to deed restricted is wonderful. Because when you build more housing, eventually you're just making town more crowded. But if you're using existing housing, you're actually helping and not making the problems worse. I also like the idea of not having things being appreciation capped, you know, where it's just deed restricted and that you have to work here. Because the problem with the appreciation caps is that it's just a way of helping keeping the poor, poor. It doesn't let, you know, doesn't give people the opportunity to make money on their investment like other people can. So what I would like to see is the town perhaps trying to build really tiny units like studios, you know, not, not tiny homes because they'd be together in one building. But it would be great if there were, were complexes built with lots of small studios where you had to be local to live there. But then you could sell it, get your full appreciation and move up into maybe a one or two bedroom condo and then move up into a house and and play the game like everybody else and live the American dream, not live in a deed restricted property that you're going to be kicked out of when you retire. So it's in a way, it's like glorified rent. You don't even own it if you can't even stay there. This way instead, let people you know, live, live, live the dream and and keep, uh, you know, moving forward and up and up to bigger and better things. What else was I gonna say? Sorry. That's what I, we, we need more rental property as well, obviously, which the town has realized lately. Not everybody wants to buy and not everybody's here for the long haul. So the McCain property rental properties is is the right idea. It also, what I'm also in favor is distributing all the deed restrict.
Time's up.
Mike Zobi. And I agree with a lot of folks here that are just about everybody that town has done a fantastic job with employee housing so far. You know, I live in the Wellington neighborhood and just it's, it's a community of local people with kids running around. And that's what a, that's what a neighborhood should be. And with not only the, what, 17 or so projects that are currently here in the town and with what's on the, on the horizon out there at the McCain property and and the partnership with the county at the Justice Center. You know, we're, that's going to provide a lot of relief, but it really isn't enough for the long term projections that we have. And so we need to keep, as others, others have said here, you know, working with the school district, the sanitation district, you know, areas that have departments that have extra land here and work with the county. Unfortunately, the market does not answer this need at all. And the only way that locals are going to be able to stay here, whether it's rental units for those seasonal employees or for people who want to stay here. You know, government being involved is the only way that we're going to be able to stay here if the market stays on this trajectory. So I really support what the town is doing and we need to do more. We need to leverage our resources. I think programs like buybacks and lease to locals and incentives provided to property owners to long term rent or deed restrict their properties are fabulous programs and we need to make sure that those are resourced. If not expanded in the future. And we need to make sure that those are resourced, if not expanded in the future. I also think that, you know, if we can continue to build these things, we can keep people in, in the upper blue. And that's really important because driving over.
Time's up.
Jason Libby. I mean, this town has done a remarkable job on all the local housing, keeping people. My main goal would be just keeping locals local. That's why I kind of got into real estate as well, is just trying to help people out and keep it affordable. But the land banking, more of that. The town's been doing great with the lease to locals, buy downs, housing helps, the new projects coming up line, up the line as well. But it's got to remain affordable for long-term living to sustain this. Yes, the other market, the open market has been through the roof. So without programs like this, it's just not sustainable for a workforce. Ultimately, we'll just have no one to work in our businesses and keep them going. So more projects like Wellington, I think that's just a premier neighborhood or at least a model neighborhood for what we're looking for moving forward. And just keeping everybody here. Thanks.
Well, I told you guys, we would talk about tourism. So I, I'm wondering how, if you're elected, how would you work with the Breckenridge Tourism Office to manage visitation and crowds?
Jason Libby, I think it's more of managing, again, quality of life for our locals. Promote and educate using free transportation, incentivizing carpooling and coordinating visitors to carpool. Tiered parking systems for, to kill the congestion. And just more bus routes. I know it's hard with staffing right now, but if we can get more people on buses further outside of town, get them into town without their own cars. I know it's hard to do, but more boots, more bikes, getting everybody into town. But ultimately, just keeping that harmony, quality of life for our residents and this place for our visitors as well, because ultimately we'll self-correct. If the town gets too crazy crowded, then no one will want to come here. Well, it's hard to believe, but yeah, but, uh, or we just won't have the work staff to do it. So.
Mike Zobi. I think, you know, when you talk about managing tourism with the BTO, there's a couple of different facets to that. And one is events. I, I remember when snow sculpting, Tom, you probably remember this too, when snow sculpting was along Main Street and it was a locals event. And it was far from professional, let's just say that. And an Uller Fest used to be, and the parade used to be a locals event. And now that they are simply just out of control. And I would like to see, if we're going to have events and we're going to promote them through the BTO or anybody else, I would like to see the first question asked on those events is not how many people can it bring into town, but how will it benefit the local people and, and how will it engage local people? I would really love to see that.
Time's up.
Well, my fear has been the Yogi Bear prophecy. No one goes there anymore. It's too crowded. You know, I think that eventually if town gets too crowded and too busy, people just won't come anymore. It'll have the opposite effect. I've seen that happen at Whistler. Although Whistler's now more crowded than ever, there was a point after the late nineties when it was too crowded and no, and everyone stopped going. That's when Intra-West went under. So it does happen. So I, I, we'll go back to the crazy idea I had that I mentioned before, that maybe we get rid of the parking lots. Maybe we make people stay overnight. Maybe we make this like a destination resort. And we don't have all the traffic because people actually have to come in and stay. And maybe that makes it more of a special place and cuts down the traffic. But I mean, that's just one idea and there may be better ideas, but that might be a way to handle the tourism. Just to make sure everyone has a place and then everyone takes a, a bus into the core of town or walks and nobody drives. That's all I have to say.
Tom Day. So I, I'd have to say we, I think we've done a really good job. We need to do that much more, quite frankly. I love Lucy Kay. I've been, I've known Lucy for years and years and I've known everybody. I was talking with Susannah Chapala, who was one of the agents in my office, who's lived here forever too. And she worked for the BRC, the Breckenridge Resort Chamber. And she said their mantra then was always, how do we get people come? How do we get people to come? We've done that. I think, I think it's worked pretty good. So I don't, I don't know if we really need to do that much more. The thing that's so crazy is, is Vale Resorts or Vale, Vale, the town of Vale or the ski area. Vale's fifty, fifty-two eighty figure of miles, fifty-two eighty acres. It's almost twice the size of Breckenridge. We are the, the, the most visited single ski resort in North America, as far as I know still. So what else do we need to do? You know, we're, I think we're killing it. So we're, we're complaining about too many people here. So maybe we need to tone down our marketing a little bit. Makes sense to me. So we've, we've been successful, you know, and, and our mantra for years and years has been, how do we get people to come? And now that they're here, we're going like, shit, there's too many people. So maybe that's what we need to do, step lip, step back a little bit.
Todd Rankin for the Zoomers. The BTO has been incredibly successful in driving visitation to, to Brek. And as part of that, when you look at the, the visitor, not every visitor's the same. One of the things that's really important for our economy and for our, our businesses is that we have destination visitors. So I think continuing to invest in marketing to the right visitor when it comes to making sure that they're, they're staying for a bit and, and making sure we don't turn into Estes Park when it comes into only having drive-up day visitors is, is one of our challenges. We've got to have a good mix there and, and too much drive up. And then that's, that's a problem and a challenge if they're not spending money in the community, right? So I think we need to still invest in marketing dollars. We also need to level up and invest in management. That's, that's kind of the next phase here in my mind in the next decade is in, investing in that management to make sure we're getting the right quality of life, the right harmony and balance between our, our locals and our visitors, so that the guest experience is phenomenal. Because that's what we're all about. That's what the brand is. Everybody loves it here because it's good. So we've got to continue to kind of play with the mixture there to make sure it's good. And I think part of that's working with the ski area. We've got to talk to them about, you know, prices of passes. So we're not getting inundated with a bazillion folks from the Front Range, you know, all the time. I think that, you know, is good for the ski area as well. And I think part of that too is a dialogue with BGV on specific events. I think we've got to look at the timing of events, you know, what I mentioned earlier on snow sculptures. Maybe some of that focus is midweek instead of on Saturday, when I already have thirty thousand skiers here for a Saturday. I don't know that we need fifteen thousand folks to visit snow sculptures on Saturday. I think we can use ticketing and then ticketing at events to, to kind of get that result and make sure we want. And then certainly using the parking structure and parking to, again, get the right feel in town. Thank you.
Carol Sidey for the Zoomers. That is the constant balancing act in our community. Our community's vision is harmony of quality of life for residents and quality of place for visitors. And that is a constant ballast balancing act. A strong community makes for a strong economy and vice versa. And I think we have been trending a bit out of balance. Some of this is due to the post-COVID travel surge. But growth is not always bad, but it is when unmanaged. And I think managed is the key word. Crowding isn't just impacting the day-to-day lives of our permanent residents, but also reflected negatively now in our post visitor surveys, the net promoter score that the BTO does. And this can impact our future economy. Snow sculptures, for example, I think that's something that we should be very proud of, those put together by locals and turned into world-class event. Where we can work with the BTO is really working on management, ticketing, hours, size, messaging. The BTO is so valuable in the fact that it attracts that destination visitor who's going to stay longer, who's going to spend more dollars. And we've seen in the last year or so especially, the BT has, oh, has shifted to that second M, or DMMO, Destination Marketing Management Organization. And the management side is becoming increasingly important from encouraging visitors to recycle, trail etiquette, but also supporting employees and employers as a resource. And we especially saw this shift during COVID. Otherwise, we have a healthy economy and all sectors of task revenue, we have a very robust budget and we're very lucky. And it's not always going to be this way. So we do need to continue to support economic prosperity, but make sure every decision takes into consideration how it can impact our full-time resident. Thank you.
Ellie Doolan. I think this question, this answer to the question can vary. You know, if it was two thousand eight, when our whole United States was experiencing economic hardship, then obviously town of Breckenridge is saying, we have to figure out a way to attract tourists. But now in twenty twenty-two, we are finally seeing things return to normal and we are having those tourists come back. And our sales tax revenue is back to pre-pandemic levels. So right now, I think that the Brek Tourism Office doesn't really need to do a lot to attract people here because people know the brand of Breckenridge. We do, as Tom said, we do have more skier visits than Vale Resorts. And so, so we, we don't have a problem attracting tourism to Breckenridge. One of the things that I think we can do that others have spoken about is expanding our bussing. Again, that goes back to being able to hire people. And so we do need to, as a town, pay a living wage. Another thing with tourism is that I think we do need to present that impeccable image of Breckenridge. And when you see roads that aren't plowed and sidewalks that aren't plowed and we see potholes. And today I saw a crew out filling potholes when it was snowing. I'm not sure how effective that's going to be, quite frankly, with moisture, but best of luck to them. But, uh, you know, we need to have, we need to present the image that we want to attract. And if we have trash on our streets and trash cans that are overflowing because the town is not managing those things, that is going to tell the tourist, hey, it's okay to throw my trash on the ground. It's okay to throw my mask on the ground. And so maybe instead of spending all that money on tourism, we need to spend that money investing in our community, hiring sanitation workers, having trash cans and really present the image.
Nathan Moorfield for the Zoom. Who knew managing success would be this hard, right? The BTO has done a fabulous job in the time that I've been here. And there are definitely times I don't envy their challenges going forward. I think a couple of people have mentioned management of events and I think that's pretty key. I never thought I would see a, a day when we had a ticket something like Oktoberfest or, or the, the International Snow Sculptures, but it makes sense now. There's, there are just more people than we can handle on certain days. I definitely agree that marketing towards the destination visitor is a far better use of funds. They are the ones who, I mean, I worked in the tourist industry for eighteen years on Main Street. So the people that come up from Denver do a lot for restaurants, but they don't do a lot for, you know, clothing stores and ski shops and different things like that. I do think that marketing to the destination traveler is a little easier for us to handle. I think we need to make sure we support the BTO. It's weird. I feel like sometimes people are angry with them for succeeding and those guys are working really hard and they do a really, really good job for us. And they've created a situation, I, I mean, I don't know that I could still afford to live here if they hadn't done such a great job over X number of years. So I, I do think they can help with educating people before they come here, a little bit of how to get around town. Echoing the values of what we're trying to do, keep, keep the place clean, keep the place neat. But it's, it's an interesting thing to, to have that much, so much success that you're struggling with how to manage success. And how do you tell people not to come here or the right people to come here? But they do a good job. I do think managing the events is.
Time's up.
Jay Beckerman. On the question of how you work with the BTO, I've been happy to hear the fellow candidates of supporting the BTO. Because the BTO has done a very good job and has served a very important role over the last ten, fifteen years. And I think that part of that, that I mentioned before, was that Destination Management Plan, in which the entire community came together to formulate these points on the horizon to follow, to elevate Brek's character and brand, to do more boots and bikes and less cars, and to establish Breckenridge as the leading edge in the environmental stewardship. And I think that is where, that last one is where I want to spend my focus of the community stewardship, of responsible tourism, of modernizing our fleet so that our town vehicles and our buses are not running on gasoline. And that could not be more true than it is today. And I think that some of that's been mentioned is expanding the management role of the BTO and the, and really engaging with that. And right now, we're about seventy percent marketing and thirty percent management. And that is a dial that is very fluid and we can go and move that as necessary. But the pri- primary BTO objective is to market to out-of-state visitors. Why out-of-state visitors? Well, they have a smaller footprint in our community. They take ma- buses up here and mass transit instead of bringing their own cars. If they do take a car, they park it and then walk and take our public transportation. These are all things that are very important. And do they spend more? They absolutely do. But more importantly, they stay longer. So it's less manpower to turn over less frequently. And then lastly, the events. Events have three needs or three objectives. Branding, filling a need time, or being for locals.
Your time's up.
That's all the time that we have for tonight, which is about seven o'clock. So I want to thank everybody for being here. Again, thanks for running. For voters at home, you should get your ballot sometime next week. They mail out on March fifteenth. If you want to learn more about the candidates, if you head to summitdaily.com, everyone wrote a commentary for us outlining their top priorities. And we also had additional Q and A's there. So we asked everyone about the labor shortage, the outdoor energy mitigation program, quality of life for residents, all those kinds of things. So you can find more information there. Thanks, everybody who drove here to be here today. And thanks, everybody, for watching on Zoom at home.